Guys, if you want summer jobs, do the applications by next week.
We're live, Lizzy.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education regular meeting. We'll begin this evening with a moment of silence for special intentions.
In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember Dr. Theodore Martland, who passed away in May 5th. He was a deputy superintendent of Waterbury Public Schools from 1972 to 1984, and subsequently served in many multiple supervisory roles, retiring in 1986. So let's remember Dr. Martland and recognize his service and dedication to the students of Waterbury this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Awad, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should sing my country's anthem, but that's funny.
Here.
Vice President Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Serrano.
Here.
Commissioner Stango.
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Theriot. Commissioner Jason Vanstone.
President.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
President.
President Brown.
President. Thank you. We have a quorum. Communications, could I have a motion, please?
Motion to receiving place on file, communications is listed.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll have public address to the board. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to spend the regular order of business in order to hear from the public.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. All speakers are encouraged to submit prepared written statements to the commissioners. Comments shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes. There will be no responses this evening to any questions or concerns raised. They will be referred to the administration for review and response, and we do take your comments very seriously. Do I have anybody on the agenda? Okay, first on the agenda is Dawn McCain. If you could give us your name and address, please.
My name is Dawn McLean. I live at 164 Chestnut Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut. I'm here to say new jobs' salaries add up to $600,000, not counting Darren Schwartz's salary and the new superintendent's. Almost $1 million going into central office drained a swamp. But yet, no new classroom assistants, no new PIRAs, no more attendance counselors, and no more library pages. Teachers are given a stipend for supplies that cover about one month of school, and then they use their own money for the next nine months. Our students need smaller classes, and yet classrooms are closing, and the remaining classroom populations are at max and even over. Use our tax money for our children, not for these people who come through and collect huge salaries. When I heard they were depleting the ILD positions, I jumped for joy. But then I see the positions remained, but the names of the positions were changed. And I would bet that the same people who are ILDs will hold these new positions if our district do not move forward before. What makes you think they will make a difference now? Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Next is Margaret O'Brien.
Good evening, Margaret.
Good evening, Margaret O'Brien, Malone Drive, Waterbury, Connecticut. Many times over the past 10-plus years, I have stated the fact that you needed to stop relying on Alliance grant monies from Connecticut. That time now has come when Connecticut doesn't even know what they have or what they're going to give out. You have removed several central office high-paying positions, as is in the ILDs, in order to save money, according to the March 2018 financial workshop agenda. That's all great, but it only works if you are not going to turn it around and spend it on either three assistant superintendents and/or assistant chief operating officers, which we know will cost another high salary once again, along with benefits included, when it is the students and the materials they need to learn whom are our first priority. You may not be voting on job descriptions tonight, or you may be, but we all know how well what happens when you do vote. You all start with one thing, and you slowly slide into another, and before you know it, it's gone through, and no one's really thought it through. Recently, I attended the curriculum committee meeting and observed new curriculum proposals for our students in science in LA. These were positive and wonderful proposals to listen to, and finally, for the elementary level, which will move our students forward in learning, for the first time in over eight years. Materials that should have been in place instead of hiring ILDs, materials and lessons which we can give our teachers a true opportunity to help our students acquire knowledge they have never had in many years. This is where you should be spending the monies, not any more central office staff. With salaries comes raises, monies you cannot guarantee in the future. As an educator and a taxpayer, spend on the students first. Let our new superintendent, whom member he or she will be, prove themselves to be worthy of this district, and our students first, before any more additional personnel can come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak this evening? Seeing none?
Motion to return the regular order of business?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next is our illustrious deputy superintendent, Mr. Henry.
Thank you. I'd like to begin this evening's report by simply reminding folks of the great time that we had this past Thursday, May 10th, as we celebrated superintendent's Students' Recognition Award Ceremony. We were able to recognize over 50 of our students representing all of our 32 schools. We were honored to have had Mayor O'Leary present, and we have received many, many compliments on our new format, where we were able to celebrate all of our students in one evening. Second announcement has to do with Alana Donis, an 11th grade student from Willby High School, who received an award for youth leadership during their 15 annual Excellence in Youth Awards that were celebrated again at the Waterbury Youth Services. WAM's Theater Department received word that their theater application to the American High School Theater Festival was accepted, and what comes with that is their ability to go to Edinburgh's International Theater Festival in Scotland a year from now, August 2019. Crosby High School placed second during this past weekend's Quiz Bowl. It was held at the AOH Club in Waterbury, and we must at least share the fact that Holy Cross won. Two other reminders or announcements have to do with the fact that tomorrow we'll be having the Parent Community Leadership Conference, which will be taking place beginning at 8:00 a.m. and anticipate ending about 1:00 p.m. at Nugget Talk Valley Community College. And so I know many of you in the audience will be attending and participating. The other reminder is that we will be celebrating our students as well this coming Monday with our title, "Celebrating Community Through the Arts," is our attempt to showcase the talent within our district, and those will be opening at 5:00 p.m. at the Palace Theater. We must remind you, tickets are required, and so please ensure that if you're to attend, that you've been able to secure a ticket. It's a free event, but tickets were being distributed for that purpose. We're very excited about those two events coming up. Our high school students from Crosby, Willby, and Waterbury Arts Magnet Schools, they'll be participating in this Kids Speak event on May 22nd. It's a UConn School Law event where students are able to attend and discuss topics related to civil and human rights. And so we'll be represented by those three schools. This year, we are also having our --
[music playing]
Phones ring. No.
[laughing]
Repeatedly.
Yeah, okay. We'll be celebrating our educators of excellence this Thursday, June 14th, 4:30 at Crosby High School. And this time, we're not only honoring our teachers of the year, but in addition to that, we'll be recognizing one administrator of the year, one professional of the year, and one support services person of the year.
Nice.
So we decided to expand that since youngsters are taught, in many respects, by the entire school community in general. Mayor O'Leary's Kids Marathon 2018 scheduled for May 31st, beginning at 5:00 p.m. at Library Park, and rain date is scheduled for June 5th, should that be necessary. Two more announcements. We want to make certain that folks know that our last day of school is scheduled to be June 21st, Thursday, June 21st. And there'll be a jazz festival, jazz, no, Brass City Jazz Festival, Saturday, June 23rd, as well as the First Annual Make Music Day here in Waterbury on June 21st. And so with that, I'd like to conclude the deputy superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the deputy superintendent? Thank you. I just have a couple of things. I want to recognize a tremendous effort by our staff led by our chief academic officer, Darren Schwartz, and his team, Jackie Davis, Linda Baron Riddick, and in partnership with Bridge to Success, Althea Brooks. And Commissioner Harvey and I had an opportunity to go to an outstanding conference last Friday called "Dismantling Racism," sponsored by the State Education Resource Center. And we were very proud that our team from Waterbury brought eight students who participated, who went to the workshops. They were articulate. We should be very proud of them. And I have to commend Commissioner Harvey. Her idea from that conference, I think you've been thinking about it a lot, though?
Yes.
Is to try to see if we can't really have a more purposeful role for students on our Board of Education?
Yes.
And really hear student voice somewhat. So hopefully, we can think about that and pursue it.
Yes, absolutely.
Because these kids were just outstanding. So I want to thank Darren and staff for all they do. The second thing I want to recognize, we have students with us tonight from our parent C class. If you would please stand and be recognized. We welcome you, and we thank you for your volunteers' efforts to really learn about parents and their role in education. This is a pretty intense course that they attend. What is it, 10 weeks?
13.
13, 13 weeks?
[laughing]
So, okay, but who's counting, right? But anyway, really applaud your effort, because I know you're all busy working people, and this really is a testimony to your commitment to our kids and our education. So thank you so much for participating in this, and we look forward to working with you on the issues that you're talking about. With that, that's about it. Next, going to the consent calendar. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will read it as listed. 8.1, Request Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding Program Acknowledgement with Connecticut Military Department for Starbase, Connecticut for Academic Year 2017-2018. 8.2, Use of School Facilities by School Organizations and/or City Departments. 8.3, Use of School Facilities by Outside Organizations and/or Waiver Requests. Could I have a motion, please? Motion to approve consent calendar is read.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Number 10, Committee on School Personnel. Commissioner Stango.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I would like to make a motion this evening to remove items 10.1, 10.2, and 10.3 from tonight's agenda.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. That leaves us with 10.4.
10.4.
Commissioner Stango.
10.4, Revised Job Specifications for the Position of Supervisor of Early Childhood Education. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the revised job specifications for the position of supervisor of early childhood education. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, Committee on Finance. Commissioner Awad.
Item 11.1, with the approval of the Committee on Finance, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of a contract with barrel and conover floors for the floor replacement at Rotella Magnet School.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you.
Item 11.2, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Finance, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends the approval of the Contract with Utility Communications Incorporated for the S2 Video Camera Upgrades at Waterbury Career Academy, Waterbury Arts Magnet School, and Reed Elementary School.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
You haven't given me this much work in a long time. Item 11.3, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Finance, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of a contract with Connecticut Custom Aquatics for pool chlorination and filtration replacements at Westside Middle School, Willby High School, and Crosby High School.
Second.
Discussion.
I have discussion.
Oh, okay.
I would just, this was the only bidder, and I just think it would behoove us that in future cases, when we only have one bidder, that we look for a second bidder, because these bids came in way over what we thought they were going to be. And I appreciate that time is of the essence in these, and that's the only reason I didn't say anything about going back out. But there are other companies that do this work, and I think we need to allow or do a better job of creating a competitive environment for the work that we have done in our school system. We want to get the pools done and open and keep them open for the summer, but I think in the future, things that come in with one bid need to go back out, irregardless of, especially since they're over budget. So that's all I needed to say.
Commissioner Vanstone?
I was going to say the same thing Kathy had said. Being one bidder, it kind of puts us in a bind. It doesn't allow us to know whether our original scope was way off or the bid is incredibly incorrect. But either way, the delta between what we'd originally budgeted and the number is a far gap. In the finance meeting, I had asked Mr. Brinker, I don't know if you had the opportunity, I'll talk slow so you can mosey up to the microphone. I know in years past, when jobs were kind of in this situation, there's, I don't want to call it a loophole, but an opportunity to sometimes find a state-approved vendor who has already been doing work and see if maybe the going rate that they're charging is better than what this bid was for. Was there any opportunity in this case?
And there were no contractors on a list for pools in the state of Connecticut list.
All right.
There is no list for it. No one is on it.
So this was, in fact, the one person in the greater Connecticut area who bid, and it's going to be up to us, I guess, to suck that up. But whatever we can do going forward, and I'm not too sure what that is, we need to do a better job of making that known. You know, I understand that, you know, sometimes the people out there who can do this work aren't necessarily interested in getting involved in municipalities, because I think it's always just some low-ball bid, and it doesn't necessarily work. But, you know, I would ask everyone the opportunity to, if you see a bid out there and you're a good contractor, you know, try to help us out here. Thank you, Madam President.
Just for information purposes?
Go ahead.
The increase in the cost does not provide any cost to the district. It'll be covered by the total amount of the Alliance grant of $2 million, and there is a short portion that won't be, but the city is covering that under a grant that they had also.
Thank you. Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. When I heard Commissioner Vanstone, I had no problem yielding to the elder Vanstone. Hearing the Alliance money didn't necessarily make me feel any better. I have long wanted the city bidding process that we're governed by to make, or at least look at, how it works for education. I have asked on numerous occasions and been denied the opportunity to revisit city contracts that affect education. So this is just another case in point that maybe we need to look at the education rules when it comes to the city rules on purchasing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Sweeney?
Mr. Brinker, I didn't have the opportunity the other night to ask. Did the district at all look at switching over to a salt system, which might be a little higher on the upfront, but pays back dividends in maintenance over the years?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And you're right, it was more expensive, but second, it would have taken too much time to get all of the switch over done.
That's what I was afraid of.
It's more of a long-term project, but yes, we looked at that first thing.
Okay, so what you just said now is that we are now going to include that Crosby pool as well in this current?
Yes.
So that will be all the pools? So there won't be an opportunity for a switch over on any of them?
No. And this process with the state, everything has to be completed, all the work, all the payments and invoice by October 31st.
Yep, as usual.
Plus, the pools are heavily in use by the community and by us at the schools.
I understand.
We couldn't take them out for long enough time.
Okay, good point. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
No, sorry, no.
One no? One no. Okay. All right.
Item 11.4, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Finance, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends the approval of a contract with the Young Men Christians Association for the 21st Century Day Camp.
Second. Discussion.
Under discussion?
Yep.
I did bring up in committee that we wanted to make sure that we give this opportunity to as many youth from the district to experience this, and so I believe there was going to be somewhat of a vetting process of the kids to make sure that this was an opportunity for everybody to experience a camp, and that if they were going to other camps, that we make sure that anybody that was going to no camp had the opportunity to spend some time this summer at a camp. So I know that we had talked about that, and there will be some due diligence done to make sure that we don't see any abuses of the opportunity for kids to attend camp.
Good point. Okay. I think we all agree to that, and Darren, I think you're taking that into consideration with Jim Arer at the Y. Great. But it's a great opportunity for our kids, so. Kathy, last one?
Got a vote on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Item 11.5, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Finance, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the Connecticut State Department of Education 2017-2018 Consolidated Alliance District Priority School District Application.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. That ends finance. We'll go on to Committee on Curriculum. Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to remove item 12.1 from the agenda.
Second.
No discussion?
Why are we removing it?
Is there a reason?
Is there a reason why we're removing it?
Well, we need to go back to committee, and there's a few things we need to look at for this.
Okay.
So we're going to just move it back to committee and bring it back to the board at a later time.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. 12.2?
Thank you, Madam President. 12.2, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Curriculum, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the adaption of the Science Dimensions K-5, K-5 Science Program.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Ordano. Okay. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. And I think we really appreciate all the hard work that our staff put into developing these curriculums, and as one of our speakers said tonight, this is moving us forward in a really good way. So thank you all very much. 13, Committee on Policy. Commissioner Sweeney?
Did we do 12.2?
Item 13.1, with the approval of the Committee on Policy, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the replacement of the current homeless students policy, 5118.1, with cave sample policy as amended to include reference to the district's dispute resolution form currently, Appendix A, and the update of legal references as attached.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. In a nutshell, is there something additional to this policy that we haven't seen before, or did they add any more requirements?
No, the definition of homeless was changed.
Okay, all right. So it's making us in compliance with the new state law?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. 3.2?
Item 13.2, with the approval of the Committee on Policy, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the revised nondiscrimination policies, numbers 0521-4118.14 and 5145.4, as required by Public Act 17-127, as amended to include the addition of status as a veteran and the update of legal references as attached.
Second. Discussion. Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President. Just happy to see that veterans are now getting the same protections that many other categories have. They're generally the first people to put their lives on the line to make sure we have protection, so I'm glad that we can finally do the same for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is complying with state law. We had to update our current policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. 13.3?
Item 13.3, with the approval of the Committee on Policy, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the revised education records policy, number 5125, as required by Public Act 17-68, to include the addition of the following language. A parent who is incarcerated is also entitled to knowledge of and access to all educational, medical, or similar records maintained in the cumulative record of any minor student of such incarcerated parent, except in situations, number one, where such information is considered privileged as defined in Connecticut General Statute 10-1548. as defined in Connecticut General Statute 10-1548; two, such incarcerated parent has been convicted of sexual assault or aggravated sexual assault; or, number three, such incarcerated parent is prohibited pursuant to a court order," and also the update of legal references as attached.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next is Superintendent's notification to the Board. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion received and placed on file. Superintendent's notification to the Board, item 14.1 through 14.5.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. 15, unfinished business preceding meeting only. Seeing none? 16, other unfinished new and miscellaneous business. Commissioner Van Stone, followed by Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I would just like to give some thank-yous. There's currently a program going on two nights a week at the Crosby Soccer Field where the CFC, Connecticut Football Group is, in football in this case, soccer.
Thank you.
The other football. But the thanks are to this board, Central Office, in particular, Mr. Brinker, the Mayor's Office, that has allowed this group to perform a service for our students, our student athletes that in particular play soccer, an opportunity they don't normally get, and that is structured soccer training. And in soccer, it's called training, not practice. Whereas they are given an opportunity to be instructed on skills that our suburban schools quite honestly can afford to do on their own, and our students cannot. This group has gone out and had, at this point, over $7,000 in donations to help facilitate this. We're going to, or they are going to, in the future, have a Waterbury Elite Team, which will be made up of the, the best players of Waterbury public schools, similar to what you would look at as like the Legion Baseball, whereas our baseball teams may not typically do well as schools. However, when the Legion team gets together with all our best baseball players, the Waterbury Legion team typically is one of the best in the state. So I'm very happy to say that this, this program is doing very well. A lot of people to thank. Most importantly, to thank our student athletes who have shown up in the numbers of anywhere from 15 to 25...
Wow, that's great.
On any given night, including one that I witnessed in the pouring rain on a Friday night with almost 20 of our soccer players spending their Friday night being instructed in soccer. So I, I think it's a great program. I thank everyone above, as I mentioned, Mr. Brinker, who really put this together for the group, and it, it's gone well, and I, and I think this is what, to be honest, it's what makes me come back every week. So it's, it's a great program, and I look forward to it continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your leadership. You're being modest. I know you had a lot to do with bringing this program to Waterbury. We thank you very much, Tom. Commissioner, Vice President Harvey?
Thank you, thank you. Quickly, I want to again thank, and thank him publicly, Kevin Daly for attending our ad hoc family engagement, parent engagement committee to speak about SEPTO, which is Special Ed PTO. I appreciate him taking out the time to come down to Waterbury and to shed information on this, this organization. So again, thank you, Kevin, for doing that. I want to also just announce that there will be on May 24th, that's a Thursday, and I don't think we're meeting on that date, but there is an anti-bullying session program that will be held at Reed School from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and the uniqueness regarding this program is that it's gonna be run by our youth. So again, anti-bullying session at Reed School, May 24th, that's a Thursday, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Okay, I think I'll save, there's one, something else I was gonna say. I just wanna, I wanna thank North End Middle School. A pleasant surprise, when I arrived here, they sent a T-shirt, for those of you that, at our workshop. It says, "North End Middle School, Be Kind, Kindness Club." And then on the back, it says, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" And that's a quote from Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. And I just, I'm gonna send them a thank-you note, but I think I'm gonna just hang this, I may wear this at every single board meeting, but I think we need to start to be kind. I think that's a message we want to spread throughout the district. But I just wanna thank you publicly, North End Middle School, for the T-shirt. And last but not least, I hope I'm not stealing. I can, I can go ahead and mention this? Alright, congratulations to our two doctors in the district, that's PhDs, now Dr. Paul White and Dr. Michelle Baker. And why don't we give them a hand, 'cause that's a, that's a, that's a tough one to do. Just wanna thank them, and it's always good to have a doctor in the house. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Adorno?
Thank you, Madam President. To that note, Karen, I also wanna thank and congratulate Dr. Richard Arroyo, also the Principal of Enlightenment.
Nice.
As well, so congratulations to all the doctors. I do wanna say, Saturday, June 2nd is Autism Speaks Walk at the Library Park from 9:00 to 12:00. It's something that my family and I have been participating for over nine years. I have been in communication with Pat Moran, and I will be sending out that information for her to spread to the students in the school so that they can participate as they have been throughout the year. So that's about it. Thank you.
Great. I just wanna mention that the legislative session ended on May, May 7th, I believe, and Connecticut Association of Boards of Education has given us a summary of pertinent education bills, and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Sweeney, as Chair of the Legislative Committee, to hold a meeting so we could go over these laws. There are some that are, really impact the district. I think Commissioner Van Stone talked about mandates. We have several new mandates to look at.
We do.
On the budget side, we did, we did okay. We were not cut, and I believe we were given additional dollars in light of the over 300 students, new students from our, our families from Puerto Rico. We were given additional dollars, so that was good. We had been absorbing that clause, so we did get some additional dollars. But that information is in the cave update, and I think we need to look at these and be prepared for the next session. So I would ask Commissioner Sweeney to do that. Thank you. No executive session tonight? Can I have a, oh, I'm sorry.
I did earlier today send out from cave the ECS allotments.
I saw that, yep. So I think we're in good shape moving forward. Doreen will be happy about that. You don't have to sell your firstborn, so that's good. Anyway, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.